Are you ready, Teresa?
Ready.
I'd like to call order to the Sparks City Council Meeting of Monday, February 8th, 2016 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Councilmembers Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt. Absent, but in the building. City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, invocation. If you'd all stand for the invocation, we have the President of the University Society of Hinduism. Go ahead, Rajan.
I am. I will be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures, like 1500 BCE. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvaha, Tat Savitr Vayanaam Bargo Devasat Dhimahi Yo Yona Prajyodhyata. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Satgamaya Tamso Ma Jyotirgamaya Mritiyor Mamratham Gamaya. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Niyatam Kuru Karma Thom Karma Jaya Haya Karma Na Shri Raya Yatra Pichateena Prasiddhiyate Karma Na Jagnarthath Karma Naav Niyatraalo Koyam Karma Bandhana Dartham Karma Kauntaya Mukta Sang Samachara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to maintain your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Om Sahana Va Saha Na Pratthu Sahaviryan Karva Bahai, Djasvi Na Va Di Tamasum Ma Vidhvisa Bahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. Do no obstacle arise between us. Samniva Akuti Samana, Hrdhyaniva Samna Vashtavu Manu, Yata Vasusa Asati. United years, God, may your spirits be at one that you will long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Rajan. Appreciate it. If all remain standing for the pledge allegiance, please, Mr. What's his name? Lawson, would you lead us?
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next is public comment. If you want to speak under public comment, please throw out one of these cards. I have one speaker, and it's Mr. Ron Bro, and thank you for giving me the box here so I could pronounce your name correctly. Thank you.
You wouldn't be the first one, sir.
Okay, Mr. Bro. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to raise your attentions to traffic issues that have been ongoing for 25-plus years in my neighborhood. Specific-- oh, I'm sorry. My address is 5305 San Barbara. It's Sparks, Los Altos Parkway. I'd like to talk about the traffic between-- on Los Altos Parkway, between Vista Boulevard and Orinda. I walk my dogs there four or five times a day, easily. Met a lot of people out there, and everybody, even at my homeowners' association, has the same issues: speeders and the stop sign violations there. I would estimate that in any 30-minute period at the intersection of Los Altos and San Barbara, there are five vehicles that enter that intersection at over 10 miles an hour. I estimate the same amount of people are talking on their cell phones, and if you're aware, NHTSA, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, equates talking on your cellphone to being toxic, .01 blood alcohol. If you walk up to Los Altos and Orinda, I would estimate that in any hour, there are at least five vehicles at 15 over the posted speed limit, at least. The incident that prompted me to come here today happened on December 23rd at about 8 o'clock at night. I was walking out there. I heard a car come off Los Altos Parkway in the channel where I turned. The vehicle was accelerating and turning so quickly, the tires broke traction, tripped a little bit. I stepped back away from the intersection. By the time I hit the intersection, it was nearly 70 miles an hour. Ladies and gentlemen, I am certified to visually estimate speed in this state for the closest. So I'm not exaggerating anything. That was my professional estimate. The second part of this issue is how do we get the Sparks Police Department to enforce traffic laws up there? I have tried to take care of this at the lowest possible level, starting with my homeowners' association. After 20 years, the board at my homeowners' association is as frustrated as I am. I've called the Sparks Police Department the last few years, three times. Each time I was told that my concerns would be forwarded to the patrol division. There was no increased patrol activity that I saw. I stopped three police officers, two of which were obviously on calls, just as you could tell by their demeanor. The third person, which is a little disturbing, said, and I quote, "Sir, I'm a crime car. I'm not allowed to make traffic stops." It wasn't what the Sparks Police Department had enough people to do now, but they did. I've seen two police officers parked at the intersection of Los Altos and San Barbara. Stopped to talk to them to find out what they were doing. Both of them said they were amazed at the amount of violations at the stop sign. Both said they could not stop cars that day because they were just there to, this is a quote also, "to meter the intersection." Whatever happened to that information, they gathered metering the intersection. I don't know, because, again, nothing. I'm not asking for a police officer out there 30, 40 hours a week. That would be unreasonable. I'm asking for an officer to be out there two to three hours a week at random times. That would stop the majority of these problems within a few months. I'm sure it would. And I would ask whoever has the authority in this board to ask the Sparks Police Department to provide statistics for the three months preceding today, starting today for the three months, just to see the difference between the last three months, the preceding three months, if you guys feel the need to do this, to call them and ask for extra enforcement so we can compare those numbers and present that information at the first council meeting you make, so they'll have something to talk to. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Bro. Our police chief is here. Our city manager is riding feverishly, so we will look into it. I promise you.
My name and contact information is on that card.
Great.
I don't necessarily put it on Facebook, but get it to whoever might need it professionally, and I'd be more than happy to say we can talk to them.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions?
I'll also follow up on that. I'm your councilwoman.
You have a member behind you next to the front.
I'm your councilwoman, so I will make sure we follow up.
Thanks, Mr. Bro. Okay, next is approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as outlined.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote or say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, six, consideration and possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of January 25, 2016, and the omissions, corrections, or deletions. Not looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve.
Second? Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt. Don't lose concentration here, Ed. You're killing me. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve the minutes of January 25, 2016. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote or say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, next is announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. Dr. John Novak, if you would come down, please. So this, I believe, Mr. Novak came to me asking for something to do. He moved recently from Houston, I think. Is that where you came from, John? I don't remember how long ago it was. About six, eight months ago, you came to me and--
19.
Has it been that long already?
Yeah.
It is. It does. So he came to me and said, you know, "I'm looking for something to do in the city. Blah, blah. I've done this. I've done that. I've done the other thing." Well, just happened two weeks later, I found something for him to do. So put him on the Board of Health as one of our representatives. He's done a tremendous job, obviously, and he's just gotten a special recognition. Dr. John Novak volunteered and was elected to the National Association of Local Boards of Health Boards of Directors. Thank you for your dedication and service to our city of Sparks. John, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
It's my honor.
And please, please say a few words, if you would mind. Thanks.
It's my honor and pleasure to represent the city of Sparks, but more than that, work with a team on the Washington County Belt Lines. We have an amazing team and one in the right direction. Got huge challenges like the city, you know, sits and looks at all the time. We've got about the same thing. We got a few little money issues, you know, but it's been quite an experience and the opportunity to move on to a national level. It's really quite a good thing, too. So we've got a lot of good things going for us. I plan on continuing.
Good for you, and-- It looks good. --for the city of Sparks, too, that we should elect people like yourself to do these kind of boards and commissions. And your counterpart, Ms. Ratty's on the phone, so--
Hey, she's there. She-- her phone, and she sits by me all the time. So it's really good.
Great.
Good working relationship.
Okay, comments?
You know--
Yes.
Janina, may I say something?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend John, or Mr. Novak, has spent a fabulous addition to the Board of Health. He is probably always the person at the meeting who is the most prepared, who asks the most questions, really just very dedicated in his service to the city, but frankly, to the greater county. So I just wanted to personally thank him and just say what a great addition he's been.
Well, thanks for that, Julia. And you know I wouldn't make any bad recommendations for people to sit on boards, right?
I'll reserve comments on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Julia.
All right. Dr. Novak, thank you so much. We appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to consent items, 8-1 through 8-3. Everybody want to pull a consent item? If not looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee.
I'll move to approve the consent items, 8.1 through 8.3.
Mr. Lawson.
Sir.
Motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve consent items 8-1 through 8-3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote or say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on to general business, consideration and possible approval of funding allocations recommended by the Tourism and Marketing Committee for 2016 special events. Mr. Mayberry.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. This is the City Council. Mr. Adams, I'm Adam Mayberry, Communication Manager with Item 9.1. His consideration of possible approval of funding allocation recommended by the city's Tourism and Marketing Committee. As you know, Councilman Ron Schmidt, Chairman of the City's Tour Mark Committee. Councilman Ron Schmidt also serves on that committee along with Randy Kennedy and Billy Yadi, who are members of the Banner Resort Association. The committee met on January 12th and 13th to review the 2016 special event calendar here for 2016. There's a number of special events that the Tour Mark recommended to support, along with me and Brand Leadership Team.
It's a good list.
Daniel O'Connell.
It's a good list.
$3,950. As you know, this is the annual allocation for statutory and the RSCVA that will be used for tourism and marketing purposes. If you have any questions, I'll just-- Parks Recreation Director and Staff, we're in a meeting this afternoon. Other than that, that was my--
Mr. Schmidt, any comments?
It looks like--
It's a good list, really.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to echo Mr. Adams, just thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Kennedy, for the-- all the work and everything goes into, and especially our city staff, Cindy. Cindy does a tremendous job in helping us prepare for the meeting, as well as parking wrecks with Tracy and Francine, and working all year long on our special events. It's a great list. I mean, you know, you look at where we were at eight years ago and where we're at now, despite all of our financial conditions and everything else like that. Some of our events are actually getting 50% more now than they were five years ago from this list, so it hasn't been something that's going down. On the flip side, there are some groups that are angry, that they're not getting-- they don't feel they're getting enough money to go ahead and do it. So we're trying to balance two sides here. I want to bring your attention, and I wouldn't be doing my job if I wouldn't repeat what I've talked about for the last couple of years, that, you know, there's Big Red sitting on the top of the agenda called over budget. We receive $200,000 a year in revenue. $4,000 of that comes right off the top for RSCVA to write us a check. They get paid $4,000 to write us a check, so we get $196,000. And we'll never receive, under state law, a penny more than that, no matter how well we do in this. So it's a very tough call. And we spent $247,000, of which we've overspent for the last four years. We've been burning reserves and things that we've done. We left the fund with $7,000 in it coming on up for fiscal year. Now, we receive $196,000 on July 1st from the RSCVA if we fill the rooms up and things, but that money's all dedicated to go to next year. So as you can see, we've got a major budget crisis coming on up. You can't spend every year without finding either new additional revenue sources or cutting what your expenses are. We're not allowed to deplete the count below zero. And I believe Mr. Lawson said this morning, we're not allowed to print money. I didn't know that before, but, you know--
This is a special event.
Unless we're the federal government, we're going to print money. So this item will come full, hard, fast in the next 12 months of how we're going to develop special events. Are we going to continue this path of filling those room nights on up? Filling the-- our goal is 200 days a year of special events in the city of Sparks. We set that goal eight years ago, and we're doing-- you know, staff is doing a tremendous job in helping that on out. So I thank you, and I also believe that, you know, next year will be crunch time. We've got to figure something on out, and I appreciate everybody's support.
You know, Ron, if you want, I'll only charge 2,500 bucks to make out that check for the RSCVA.
We can talk to RSCVA and see if they're willing to do that.
I can fill out a check.
Okay, I, you know--
Okay, questions? Mr. Lawson.
Can you explain, just for public record, how the money comes to us and what it comes from?
Sure.
And why it's limited to the 100 and--
I don't want to lose our audience, because it's usually about a three-day talk about this, about Senate Bill 477 in 1999 that led to a revision in 2003. But it's the 2% room tax for the city of Sparks that generate. We take that money, and the first $196,000 or $200,000 comes to the city of Sparks. Any additional revenue that's generated out of that 2% gets split evenly between the city of Reno and RSCVA. This whole thing came about with the Downtown Events Center in 1997 through 99, when the funding was being done. Originally, the funding was going to be only Downtown Reno was going to support their event center. They couldn't make budgets, so they expanded that to the Pepper Mill Atlantis and, at that time, the Hilton. And it also expanded to the city of Sparks. So there was a coalition of efforts between the city of Sparks and the Nugget to not lose our 2% money and to keep some of that money in for our special events. The compromise that was worked out was the first $200,000 we get, after that, it goes to Reno and RSCVA to spend.
So the reason I bring that up is we now have, since I sit on the RSCVA board, roughly $4 to $4.5 million extra for marketing in the $2 room tax. So it may be time to take that cap off and do something legislative. So I want to bring that open for Adam and the mayor for our next legislative session, session two, look at taking that cap out.
And I wasn't going to talk about that, but that is going to be my recommendation as we go into the next year for the legislative, as our one BDR draft we have to highly consider, because I believe that, you know, times have changed, you know, and we're trying to-- We, right now, spend, well, this year, $247,000 in the city of Sparks promoting special events. RSCVA budgeted and spent $250,000. We are on the caliber of spending money at the same level as RSCVA does. We have different criterias, a different way we look at it. They have much bigger pots of money. They spend, you know, with the air races and things like that. I'm not going to say which one's right or wrong, but I do think that the city council addressing the issue and what I consider inequity, you know, it's an inequity, no matter how you look at it, of going back to legislation. The only thing I'm concerned about is, you know, as part of the 2003 legislation in which we readdressed this thing, you know, be careful for what you ask for. Once we open it on up, it allows for a whole lot more changes on out there. And if RSCVA will back us up on that and not oppose us--
Yeah.
It was a brutal-- I remember past Councilman, Mr. Kerrigan and I sat in front of RSCVA and the board down in Carson City, and it was a brutal, it was a brutal two hours. They pretty much beat the city of Sparks up pretty good when we tried to address RSCVA money. So I would say if Reno, Washington County, or the RSCVA and Sparks looked at this as a positive thing and went down together, I suggest we definitely take a look at it.
Ms. Bybee?
I think there's--
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think there's more of an appetite, let's just say. The mayor of Reno went on record as saying that the RSCVA does not promote enough local events like this. So it may be the right time. Time means everything.
Bybee, go ahead.
I just had a question. Either Ron or Adam can answer this. On the brand leadership team, does that include the Ignite Sparks campaign that we're doing?
Ms. Strabs?
Thank you, Councilwoman Bybee. It does not. The Ignite Sparks campaign outreach is part of the comprehensive plan update. It's entirely a separate item than this. The specific items that the Tour Mark approved and the brand leadership team are primarily advertising. That would be advertising in the airport, for instance, as you say. You've probably come through the airport as often as you do. It includes also a Google AdWords campaign. We're doing a lot of advertising digitally now. That's the trend. We can measure that. It also includes some signage updates in Victorian squares and posters in the kiosks that you see, and those are outdated, need to be refreshed and updated. It's a small amount that will be allocated to provide some support for the city's mobile app. And then there's our annual contract with Rad Strategy, separate from the comprehensive plan update that they're supporting us on. It's primarily supporting my office with respect to administering the brand image, the social media efforts that we do. That's an $18,000 annual contract. So all in total, that totals about $66,000.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the list coming from the Tourism Marketing, and appreciation to everybody who's been involved into it. And I would also add discussion, I have a comment for Mr. Lawson.
Have a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lawson to approve 9.1. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor--
Go ahead.
We started out with $350,000. You see how we whittled that down to 250. And there was one application that got tied up in our computer system. And I just-- my apologies to the Sparks Chamber of Commerce that had an application that did not make it to us. We're going to reconvene next week as a board and listen to their application and determine theirs. So my apologies, that was not done on purpose.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Please vote or say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, let's move on. 9.2, possible direction to city manager regarding municipal elections in light of the Public Integrity Alliance versus Tucson. Mr. Thornley.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Thornley, City Attorney's Office of Defense. I speak for everyone in the room and everyone at home when I say welcome back to election season.
Fun and games.
As no doubt most of you are aware, the Ninth Circuit recently determined that hybrid election system, unified by the city of Tucson, where voters of a particular ward of the city voted in primary, and then the general election is conducted with the electoral at-large throughout the city, by the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment, and struck on that system. That is an issue for us, for obvious reasons, but to save the record, is because we use largely an identical system. In Tucson, it is important to note, I think, that they use-- they have a partisan electoral scheme, where we don't-- And procedurally, where that case sits right now, it's going up for an on-bomb reason at the Ninth Circuit, which means instead of being heard by a panel of three judges, it's going to be heard again by a panel of 11. It's kind of an intermediate stop on the way to petition for certiorari in front of the Supreme Court of the United States, which may or may not be granted. Nevertheless, the potential exists that this decision will change potentially two more times before we have a final answer on whether or not that electoral system runs afoul of the 14th Amendment. The 14th Amendment, we don't normally look at when we consider voting rights, you know, Voting Rights Act, we look at the 15th Amendment to the Ninth Amendment. So the equal protection clause is kind of new. Nevertheless, that's what the panel determined. From my view, I think that the possibility exists, of course, that the decision is changed. Generally speaking, broadly speaking, the Constitution tolerates participation restrictions in-- Goodness, I was doing it wrong.
The Constitution tolerates participation restrictions in primary elections. Typically, where you'd see it is by party, right? Of course, you know, registered Democrats vote in Democratic primaries and registered Republicans vote in Republican primaries. The distinction being, of course, that regardless, most of the electorate does participate in the primary, whereas in the ward-only system, that's a pretty heavy restriction on who can participate in the primary. I don't think it's necessarily a precise analog in that you still have third parties and independents who are restricted from participating in the primary at all. Nevertheless, that is, you know, I think, the broadest overview I can give you in that sense as to where the case sits. Don't really have an answer as to whether or not it's going to shake out as constitutional or not. And so what we're looking for today is whether the council would prefer to stick with the electoral system that we have spelled out in the charter, which is primary by ward and then an at-large general election, or if the council's preference is to default to the state law requirement that goes at-large in the primary and at-large in the general. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What does LCB say on this thing?
I am not aware of an LCB opinion on this matter. As it relates to special law cities, there are 12 in Nevada. Only Reno and Sparks use this hybrid system.
They did use it in Henderson, didn't they?
Well, what you see in Henderson and what you see in Carson City is that you have-- You know, I knew this off the top of my head a couple of weeks ago, but of the 12 special law cities, six have wards and six do not. And so of the cities with wards, two of them go ward-only all the way through, and two of them are at-large all the way through with a ward residency requirement.
Okay.
And then Reno and Sparks are ward-only in the primary and at-large in the general.
Okay, Mr. Lawson.
So what if we do nothing?
Well, if you do nothing, you, of course, run the risk of being challenged under this decision out of the Ninth Circuit that the electoral system we are using runs afoul of the equal protection clause.
If we pick one way or the other, don't we run the same risk?
Well, I think that--
If we pick ward-only, don't we run the same risk we pick at-large?
So to be totally clear, in my view, you have two choices, right? And that is, you can go ward-only in the primary and at-large in the general, or under state law, the default setting that you would fall back on once something is struck from the charter is at-large in the primary and at-large in the general. I don't think that you have the ability to go ward-only in the primary and ward-only in the general today. I think that's a change that you'd need to seek from the legislature. That said, yes, I think you do run the risk of being challenged in either direction. The basis for the challenge, I think, is different, depending on which direction you choose to go.
Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding, too, is obviously it's in our charter, which can't be changed until the legislature meets, to do it as we do right now, the hybrid system. So our hands are kind of tied until the legislature meets a year from now, and we can make a charter--
As I say, it's, you know, it's an interesting argument, and it's certainly one that isn't, it's not totally out of left field, but certainly, I don't think it's a slam dunk.
Does it make any difference, you said Tucson was partisan, and, and our, our, you know, our primaries are partisan, but our positions for city council and mayor are nonpartisan? Does that make any difference, that that's different for us than it is for Tucson? Does that affect how they look at it?
It is my understanding that our primaries are nonpartisan.
They're not partisan.
And so, you know, it's, it's an interesting question in that the partisan nature of the Tucson electoral, electoral system is another layer of restriction in the, in the primary beyond just geographic location. But the Ninth Circuit decision was specific as to the geographic location restriction violates the equal protection clause, and so it applies more directly to, to our system.
Okay. Well, what I meant by that is that because ours are nonpartisan offices, our offices, for us, is included on both the Republican and the Democratic primary ballots, where in Tucson, if theirs is partisan, only Democrats living in that ward could vote, or only Republicans could vote for that, where ours covers all, all-party affiliations because it's a nonpartisan. So it's just a little bit different. Does that-
It's a little bit different.
Make any difference?
I think it's just another layer of restriction, right? The, the decision comes down, and what it says is that, you know, of, of the 80,000 people or so that are, that are registered to vote in the general election, in the primary, whether they're Republicans or Democrats, or, or whatever party they identify with, only X number, X percent of that, of that 80,000 total electorate are able to participate in the primary. And so what ends up, what, what the court said is that because these people are similarly situated, they're all allowed to participate in the general. And, and the court finds that the primary is just a, it's part of the general electoral process. It's not a separate election. And so what they're saying is similarly situated people, being that these are people who vote in the general election, are being treated differently by the law. And, and on that basis, because it's a, a voting rights issue, the court applies strict scrutiny, and they say, hey, you can't do this. You can't treat people differently on the basis of geographic location. So, so no, I don't think it, it makes much difference in our case.
Okay, one, one more question, if you don't mind, Mayor. So does, does demographics of our city by ward present other issues as we look forward compared to other, to other jurisdictions? Do the demographics and breakup of each of our wards affect looking at voting rights issues? Is that something, as we look forward at this, is that something we need to consider legally?
Yeah, I think that it is. You know, that's the $64,000 question. You know, when Councilman Lawson asked what the, what the basis for a challenge in either direction would be, you know, on the one hand, if you stay with the system that we have in place right now, you're subject to challenge under the equal protection argument. That is the law in the Ninth Circuit right now. That's what you're looking at when you look at the PIA, the city of Tucson case. On the other hand, if you go at-large, at-large, the demographics of the city come into play in a, in a major way under the Voting Rights Act. You know, at-large election systems are, are the electoral processes that are most subject to being struck down, I think, by the, by the Voting Rights Act. It's impossible to say at this juncture. Certainly, we have data as it relates to the demographics of the city from the last census. That data was presented to the Charter Committee the last time it was convened. Certainly, I think it would be presented again. You know, your question as to whether or not it makes a difference, the, the generalized answer is, of course, it makes a difference. The specific answer in terms of whether or not we're going to lose a lawsuit because of it is much more difficult to respond to under the standards that the, that a Voting Rights Act claim is required to be brought under, the way it's analyzed. I couldn't answer that question today, although, you know, I, I think certainly you run the risk.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could go back to the LCB and-
And legislation, you know, right now, LCB hasn't looked at this issue or hasn't opined on the issue at all, correct?
To my knowledge, they have not.
Okay. And, and the, the process of the charter, just touching a little bit on what Councilwoman Bybee, is that we are a charter city, and we basically don't do any changes to the city that the charter says we're supposed to do without the charter change.
That is correct. The charter includes a provision that suggests that if something is found to be unconstitutional or otherwise illegal, it is struck from the charter, and the remainder of the charter continues on. It further provides that city elections are conducted pursuant to state law unless the state law conflicts with the charter. And so that's what you have here. That's the situation you have here, where the charter spells out this ward-only primary versus the at-large general, and the, the section of state law that deals with city elections, the default setting under that portion of the Nevada revised statutes is, provides for an at-large primary and an at-large general. But by and large, in my view, it's because cities like Wells and Caliente are special law cities-
Right.
And they don't have wards. And so a ward-only primary is not something that they're capable of doing.
My, my concern comes with the perception of, you know, the Gang of 63 at Carson City. And I want to bring back, the only other time that I can, you know, in my history, was a conflict, and it come back with the municipal courts, where, you know, they had documentation that, you know, the court systems had said what they could do. They had Supreme Court, or Nevada Supreme Court, says that this is what they can do, but nothing could really be done with that until the legislation says this charter can be changed to allow this type of thing to be happening. And, you know, the legislation was very clear on that, and I don't know if that's deemed to be unconstitutional or how it changes. I'm, I'm much more comfortable, considering it's still under appeal and there's, you know, the Ninth District Court, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put anything on them, what they, what they'll do or, or won't do. But, you know, my concern is showing up in, in 2017 in Carson City, we've arbitrarily gone ahead and changed the Constitution, and then the legislators say, well, you know, you don't have that responsibility, you don't have that right to do that, and you say, well, it's unconstitutional, we're going to do it. And I think we, we start coming up where we're going to butt heads with the state legislation, and I think it'd be much better to have a, a plan of attack to, to go down there and say, okay, this is the issue, we're in the court, how do we want to handle this thing? So Reno's doing it the same way, Sparks is doing it the same way, everybody's doing it the same way, and we don't arbitrarily do something that puts the Gang 63 in a, in a foul mood.
Mr. Smith, we don't have to worry about that. They're always in a foul mood.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to do the best I can here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, if we don't do anything today, if we keep it the same, it's ward only in the primary and then at-large for the general election. If we changed it, we would change it to, one of the possibilities would be to at-large for both elections, but you still had to live in the ward to run for Ward Three or Two, whatever it happens to be.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and today, we can't really do anything except make a recommendation to Charter Committee, because they're the ones that changes it at the legislature. Is that true?
No, well, yes and no.
I mean, we could vote to keep the same or change it, but it's still got to go to Charter Committee.
If you wanted to go to the at-large state default system, I think that you could do that today. You could say, you know, we're, we're much more comfortable under, in light of the, in light of the decision from the Ninth Circuit, falling back on the, on the provision of the, of the charter that strikes sections that are unconstitutional or illegal and using the state law section. But if you wanted to change it to ward only, the reason that's not an option is because it requires a legislative change. That, it is my understanding, Councilman Schmidt, that, that they actually have been receptive to that, and it's been vetoed.
Yeah.
But the-
So either way, if we change it any other way than what we have now, including what we have now, or keep it the same, we're subject, we can be brought up-
Yes.
That they can sue us for it, and then we just go with whatever happens?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Ms. Rad, do you have anything?
I do. Thank you for taking us. I think that, you know, it's my opinion that it's only a matter of time before we see a Voting Rights Act essential violation. And so I think that the long-term goal is to get to ward-only voting. That's my personal opinion. But given the circumstances that we have before us today, understanding the state law and it's not formally allowed at-large, and that there's not a great argument, legal or otherwise, for going in that direction, I say we don't act. And as the councilman pointed out, it's up to the Charter Committee to work on an answer, a longer-term answer for the committee. But my preference is we ward only, because I do think we'll see a Voting Act rights violation at some point. I just don't think we can get there today.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Okay. I move to keep the elections the same as we have it now.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to leave the voting the way it is now. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Given that we've sort of been a traditional gray area, I'm wondering if that sort of action section take no action?
I'm going to agree with that.
Mr. Thornley?
I, I think that that's a, that's a fine proposed solution, given the apparent direction of the council.
So is that the same, if we take no action?
Yeah.
That's correct.
No. Just withdraw the second? Okay, so-
And I'll withdraw and make a new motion?
Or it can just die for lax-
Yeah, we just let it go. So, all right, so there's no, is there a motion to do anything? Not seeing one, we'll just let it go like it is, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doc. Appreciate it. Is that okay with you, Julia?
That's fine. I think that's, that's where to go.
Okay, 9.3 is the first reading.
This is a first reading of Bill Number 2702, an ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of a primary and general election to be held in the city of Sparks on the 14th day of June 2016, and the 8th of November 2016 respectively, providing filing fees and providing other matters property related thereto.
This is the first reading of Bill Number 2702. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, February 22, 2016. Okay, moving on. Public hearing and action items. 10.1 Public Hearing, consideration of possible approval of Bill Number 2701, an ordinance designated by the short title 2016 Medium Term Flood Control Bond Ordinance, providing for the issuance of city of Sparks' general obligation, medium-term flood control bond series 2016, the aggregate total amount of $20 million. Go ahead there.
That's the short title.
Mr. Finance Director, yeah, it's the short version.
Good afternoon. Jeff Kronk, Financial Services Director, for the record. What I have before you is a, a public hearing and agenda item to pass the ordinance, what should be the last action that we need to do to sell the bonds that are, that would finance the finishing of the North Truckee Drain Project. We came to you, before you in December, to get to initial authorization, so this would be the final authorization. The way this ordinance is worded, we're looking to pass this as if an emergency exists. What that means is that it's really beneficial just for, for the purposes of how the bond transaction works before, in, in order to avoid having to come before you one more time and, and put the potential bond investors, the, the timing gets tricky if we do it that way. So this is just really for administrative ease to do it this way. Based on approval today, we would move forward with, with an estimated bond sale as of February 18, so here in a week and a half or so. Right now, we're looking at the way the ordinance is written, is that these bonds would not exceed $20 million. Again, we do that for financial flexibility in order to, to get the final number in there. But what we're looking for, based on community services input on the, on the actual project, is that we need approximately $19 million of funds to finish the estimated $27 million project. So we're, we're looking to, based on what we know right now, we're looking to issue bonds at a par of $18.8 million. That should come in as, with a, with a premium. But again, you know, the final number will, will shake out the actual day of the sale once we get the bids. So this is a public bid process. These are general obligation bonds, but the debt service will be paid for with the, the flood fee that city of Sparks sewer service customers pay currently. And I think with that-
Rate?
I'm ready, I'm sorry?
It's the rate.
The rate, we don't know yet. We won't know until we actually get the bids. But what we're expecting right now is, well, right now, actually, I think it's going to be lower than what we have in the staff report. But at the time we did the staff report, we were looking at about a 2.05% interest rate. If you include all the issuance costs, about a two and a half percent true, or total interest cost rate is what we're looking at. Since we've done the report, the, the markets are kind of exploding on us, or maybe imploding, that might be a better way to put it. Yields have really dropped since, again, since just we even wrote, wrote this report. We won't know, again, but right now, investors are looking for safety. Even today, you know, gold spiked up and, and the Treasury yields went, went, you know, significantly down. Right now, the, the 10-year yield is about 1.75% today. So, you know, that, that would be less than our, our 10-year bond that we're proposing, which is what a medium-term bond is, and are estimated at 2%, so there's a lot of things in the market right now that are pointing to a lower interest rate. Ask me in 10 days, might be a completely different story. So with, with that, I'll take questions.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff, thank you to you and your staff, and Neil and his staff for moving this thing right along. I think we're, we're on our timeframe that you guys promised the council for, and I appreciate, appreciate you guys on out there moving this thing quickly. Couple of questions, just to, this has the transferability issue to it that I, I think everybody's concerned about, is if the flood control people take it over, it transfers over to no cost to city of Sparks, they take our money as well as our bond payment?
No, not the way this, not the way this is written. However, that's certainly something that can be entertained at that time. This is going to be, this is issued with, as a general obligation, similar to, to what our regular sewer bonds are. So it's a general obligation of the city, even though we're going to have, have a very specific revenue source to pay that. So I think at that time, we would have to figure out how to do that, if that's the way to go. There, there's lots of ways to do that, though, whether you're transferring the debt or you keep the debt on city of Sparks and just retain the, the ability to keep issuing the, the proposed, or the current fee, I mean. The idea, though, with this bond is that we're, we're searching for a, or we're seeking, we're actually going to be requiring an early call provision, which means that we can redeem this bond at the, at no earlier than five years. So, and just doing a back-of-the-napkin analysis, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to pay this off in six to seven years at the most.
I agree. So we can then take at this with turbo, if flood comes on out of this thing and they actually do it, they can go ahead and just rewrite, rewrite a new bond and pay this one off without penalty?
There's lots of ways we can get that done.
So there's, there's options on it there.
Yes.
Give us the money. And, you know, I'm, you know, I'm very, very supportive of this, and I want to make sure that folks out there know- be lower than what we have in the staff report. But at the time we did the staff report, we were looking at about a 2.05% interest rate. If you include all the issuance costs, about a 2.5% or total interest cost rate is what we're looking at. Since we've done the report, the markets are kind of exploding on us, or maybe imploding, that might be a better way to put it. Yields have really dropped since, again, since just we even wrote this report. We won't know, again, but right now, investors are looking for safety. Even today, you know, gold spiked up, and the Treasury yields went significantly down. Right now, the 10-year yield is about 1.75% today. So, you know, that would be less than our 10-year bond that we're proposing, which is what a medium-term bond is, and our estimate at 2%. So, there's a lot of things in the market right now that are pointing to a lower interest rate. Ask me in 10 days, might be a completely different story. So, with that, I'll take questions.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff?
Thank you to you and your staff, and Neil and his staff for moving this thing right along. I think we're on our timeframe that you guys promised the council for, and I appreciate you guys on out there moving this thing quickly. Couple of questions, just to... This has the transferability issue to it that I think everybody's concerned about, is if the flood control people take it over, it transfers over to no cost to City of Sparks, they take our money as well as our bond payment?
No, not the way this is written. However, that's certainly something that can be entertained at that time. This is going to be, this is issued as a general obligation, similar to what our regular sewer bonds are. So, it's a general obligation of the city, even though we're going to have a very specific revenue source to pay that. So, I think at that time, we would have to figure out how to do that, if that's the way to go. There's lots of ways to do that, though, whether you're transferring the debt or you keep the debt on City of Sparks and just retain the ability to keep issuing the proposed, or the current fee, I mean. The idea, though, with this bond is that we're searching for a, or we're seeking, we're actually going to be requiring an early call provision, which means that we can redeem this bond at no earlier than five years. So, and just doing a back-of-the-napkin analysis, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to pay this off in six to seven years at the most.
I agree. So, we can then take at this with turbo, if flood comes on out of this thing, and they actually do it, they can go ahead and just rewrite a new bond and pay this one off without penalty.
There's lots of ways we can get that done.
So, there's options on there.
Yes.
Give us the money. And, you know, I'm very, very supportive of this, and I want to make sure that folks out there know why we're doing this. You know, we're only 10 months away from a 20-year ago event that devastated this city, $200 million in flood. And I'm not willing to sit down and wait for ballot measures and everything else like that to get this project finished. I think it's imperative the City of Sparks move forward and get this thing done. And I think that with the ability to pay it off in six to seven years, we may have this paid off before the flood control actually takes on over. So, I support it. Nothing against the Flood Control Chair or anything else like that. There's a lot of headwinds out there. Okay, Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. So, the bond closing would be in March, and we'd have the funds available at that time?
Yes. That's anticipated as early... Scroll. It's what we anticipate.
Okay. And the timeframe, I know that's separate from the fiscal side of it, but the timeframe on the project is...
I will turn that over to our Community Services Department. I see Mr. Hummel walking up here now, the man with all the answers.
Thanks, Jeff. Yes, Councilman Bybee, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager, for the record. We are currently acquiring the properties. We have two remaining easements to get, finishing up the bid package now, so that we're ready to go.
What's timeframe?
And from timeframe for completion that you're targeting?
We're looking to have that bid package ready end of March.
How long before you're done?
Before the whole thing's finished.
For the timeframe for the contract, we're looking at an 18-month construction period. We looked at 12 months of the last one. They were quicker than that, but got some other challenges to face.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, seeing that we're going to have a turbo payoff, we need a turbo, get this thing done, so... All right, this is a public hearing. So, open a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bringing back the council for action. Ms. Ratty, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I thought everyone else had questions.
Okay. Looking for a motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Bill Number 2701, authorizing the issuance of medium-term obligations up to $20 million, provide for financing of flood control and drainage projects.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve 10.1, approval of Bill Number 2701, $20 million bond for a flood control project. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please, voters, say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Thanks, Jeff. And I want everybody out there to know that, you know, the City of Sparks is the only one that's actually doing something for the flood control project, and that we're doing it on our own dime mostly. You know, the other entities haven't figured it out yet, but hopefully, they'll come to the table here, and we'll get something done for a real flood project for the whole area, so... Okay, closed-door session, Steve?
Close.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public, please? Comments, city councilor, city manager? Ms. Ratty, you have anything?
No.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to go back. We had a retreat a couple of months ago, and we looked at our strengths and weaknesses. And in the retreat, I believe, we talked about consolidation, and we were looking at doing a reconfirm of our consolidation thing with the council and vote on it here at the council, and I haven't seen that come forward yet. Are we going to be doing that still for the public vote, or are we stood on consolidation issues?
Yeah, I think we can, you can ask to have it put on the agenda, run it.
Yeah, let's, if we can get it on the agenda to talk about it, I think that would be great. The other item I have, and I owe the council an apology, because I wasn't aware that this, you know, you learn something new every day in this job, you know? I had, a few weeks ago, I had asked for a legal opinion on some legislation that was happening over in Washoe County. And I was not aware of that, when I asked for a legal opinion on a policy matter, that it was a private matter, that was not disseminated to the rest of the council. And so, I apologize for that. And I'd like to have a policy discussion for this council on items that we... I've always thought that every item that's brought for us, the city attorney's reviewed and could make comments on. I want to make sure that we all understand what stays confidential in the city attorney's office and what... Because I was expecting that information. I even wrote Ms. Bybee an email, said I thought it was available to the public. I didn't know that it was confidential to me for asking that. It was never intended, and I apologize if anybody saw that. It was never intended to be a personal matter, and I'd like to have some guidance through the city attorney's office and the city manager's office, on when we ask for something, what should we expect to be held confidential in the city attorney's office, and what we expect to be sent out to everybody, to the rest of the council? Because on policy decisions, I never want anything to be confidential for me. I want it to be, everybody knows what's going on.
Counsel, when you made all the simple responsibilities for that, I should have handed this out to the entire city council. I put it on my website. Anything that is nonconfidential, I usually put it on the Sparks City Attorney's website. It was an oversight on my part. I should have passed it out, just to make sure that everybody had received it. So, I'll, as far as the policy goes, here on out, it's a nonconfidential matter. I will pass it out to the city council. If it's, in fact, a confidential matter concerning, say, liability or something that's facing the city, I'll note it as confidential. I'll still pass it out to the respective city council members. And if it's specific to a particular council member, say, do I have a conflict of interest? Should I vote on this? Should I not vote on this? Then I will go ahead and give that to the individual council member protected by the attorney's office.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Thank you.